No. No? Javelin. There we are. You're on.
G'day, everyone. We're going to call the meeting to order. And welcome to the City of Everett Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, February 6, 2018. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair back.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
Commissioner Zelinski.
Here.
Commissioner Lavera.
Here.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Here.
Commissioner McGinn.
Here.
Commissioner Lark.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Okay, let's move on to the approval of the minutes. I know Commissioner Dunn had some comments.
Yeah, I emailed an edit for the last page. Any other?
Anybody out there hear a motion?
Then I move to approve as amended.
Next. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Lark?
Abstain.
Commissioner McGinn? Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavera? Yes. Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Vice Chair back?
Abstain. Okay, let's move on. Let's move and run along to reports of members. Let's start with Commissioner Dunn.
I have actually offered to be on the Tree Committee, so pending approval, and if no one else wants to do it, I hear they have cookies at their meetings, so...
And they're very friendly, because I actually did Tree Committee meeting last year.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll enjoy it. It's great.
So pending approval, I'll be able to give updates and be the liaison for the Tree Committee for the commission.
Is that something that we have to approve as a commission?
I don't think so. I think they were just looking for volunteers. Alan Giffen, Planning Director, they were just looking for volunteers when Mr. Leonard from the Parks Department came a couple of meetings ago. And so unless there's others that want to vie for that position, then you could settle it with a vote. But I think that they were looking for just anybody who's willing to volunteer.
Well, we appreciate Commissioner Dunn volunteering. Thank you. All right, so staff comments?
I think there may be other Commissioner comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just wanted to share last week, my Housing Hope, as well as other nonprofits in Snohomish County participated in Housing and Homelessness Advocacy Day in Olympia. A lot of great conversations with the state legislators, as well as conversations around thanking them for the investment in the Housing Trust Fund, which helps building around here in Everett, as well as talking about two pieces of legislation such as source of income discrimination, as well as making sure document recording fees do not receive a sunset clause and can help pay for additional housing services. So tangentially related to planning, but very interesting overall.
Commissioner McGinn?
No report.
No report?
I attended a summit on housing in Bellevue last week, and it's kind of alarming, and I'm going to forward the slides to Kathy, how much land we really don't have that's available in Snohomish County for housing.
Was there a particular type of housing that they were mentioning?
All.
No report for me? Staff comments?
Yes, in fact, follow-up on Commissioner Tisdale's comments, and that is that there was legislation, excuse me, passed last year that formed, gave the directive to the Department of Commerce to look at how the, what they call buildable lands reports in the counties that are required to look at how much land is available for development, and that includes Snohomish County, under comprehensive plans, how to improve the methodologies that are used to have an accurate representation of land that is available. That work is just getting started. I don't recall the date by which that report has to be done, but that should affect how counties, the buildable lands counties, do their estimates of what is available for development, and that is something that's required in six, I think it's now seven counties in Washington, ours being one of them. So more will follow with that, and as we get more information, we will pass that along to the commission. As far as other items of interest, next meeting in two weeks from tonight, we'll be talking about electric fences. Also, we will look at the city's current regulations, the limitation on the number of retail marijuana stores. That will just be a workshop, but we'll talk, we'll provide some data that police departments gathering and some other information about other jurisdictions as well. And, oh, the, some, getting into, continuing the metro theme that we're going to be covering tonight, we'll be getting into the land use code a little bit with some detail about the permitted land uses in the three different zones within the metro area. So David will set the stage for that tonight, and at the next meeting, we'll have more detail. Anything else, David? Okay, that's it from staff.
Thank you. If anybody would like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda to commission, please come forward. I have someone signed up for the Metro Everett. Is there anybody who has anything that's not on the agenda? All right. Great. All right, well, then we'll move on to item number one, Metro Everett.
All right, thank you. David Selheim, Long Range Planning Manager, and going to do a, we have two new commission members, so you haven't had all the briefing and the privilege that some of the other ones have had to review the different chapters, but we have gone through basically the plan in pieces, and now you see a compiled draft, a little bit reorganized based on some comments, putting things into background sections, and then looking at the policies and actions. And so tonight, I want to just kind of walk through the plan itself. And as a reminder to everybody, Metro Everett goes from I-5 to the railroad tracks, goes north up to Everett High School, down south to the Brown Bear Car Wash. Basically, the areas of commercial mixed in the Everett Station and the multifamily zoning around the city's center is the metro center plan. So I think you have gotten a schedule, hopefully, of Planning Commission's schedule. So what we've tried to do is try to put some times and some deadlines so that we can try to keep on track and get this done this year. So what I have up on the screen right now, hard to read, is the Planning Commission schedule coming up here. So in February, so tonight, doing the briefing on the metro plan, as Alan mentioned. At the next meeting on the 20th, we'll look at one part of the Metro Everett Code, and that'll be the use tables. Then we'll be back at the first meeting in March, looking at some of the development standards along with a parking chapter. And the parking chapter that we're drafting right now is not only for Metro Everett, but it's citywide. So we are working on a little bit of our code streamlining concepts and taking on the parking chapter and doing it citywide. In the city, we also have Title 15, oh, excuse me, it went past. And then on March 20th, we're going to do the port compatibility briefing. So one of the things that has come up and is in the plan is the idea of setting the overlay for compatibility with the ports and Navy areas. And so we'll, we're drafting an ordinance or some standards for that, and Camber Landry is going to come to you and bring that draft for briefing on March 20th. In April, the first meeting in April, we're going to look at some procedures. The Title 15 of our code identifies which types of actions get noticed to neighbors and which ones can be acted on by staff, and which ones go to public hearing in front of the hearing examiner. And so with a whole new code, a lot of that stuff changes and shifts. So as a result of that, we have changes that we're going to be doing in Title 15, and so we'll be bringing that to you at the beginning of April, uplooking at that. For you guys, then you get a little bit of a reprieve until the second week in May. And the reason for that is that during that time period, what we'll do is we'll take the plan and we'll start going out, back out to the public again. So we're going to have another round of open house. We're going to do some testing of our codes where staff will take some projects and kind of test them out. We'll also do a little bit of focus groups with some developers to kind of look at the readability of the codes and make sure that things work and make some adjustments based on both the technical review, but also the public input at the open houses as part of that. So another round of informal input before we come back into a little bit more of the legislative process. So the second week in May, then, we would have a full plan and code package to you. We'll do a briefing of that. We'll focus in on really what the changes are since you last saw it. So rather than go through the whole thing, we'll identify what we heard and how we responded to that during that input. Then we do some of our notice requirements, and then looking at public hearing at the first meeting in June and anticipating that action at your second meeting in June, if you are ready for that. And then after that, same kind of process goes to City Council. So we kind of start over again with some of that stuff at City Council. And a larger schedule we have is, also includes the City Council. We have been regularly briefing the City Council so that they're not surprised at the end. And we have two scheduled briefings to go to them during this period of time, too, so that they see some of the drafts and provide some feedback and input to us on that. So what I'd like to do first, actually, is go almost to the end of the Metro Everett Plan, which is Appendix A, which is the implementation, because what this is really is the work plan, and to kind of talk about all the things that we have to do in order to make this plan reality. And so when we look at the plans, first off, we have to adopt some version of the new Metro Everett Plan. At the same time, we have a requirement for consistency with our existing comprehensive plan, so we'll have to amend our existing comprehensive plan. There's two subarea plans that are within the Metro Everett area. The Everett Station Plan, which was adopted in 2005, the downtown plan in 2006. So we'll have to repeal those two plans. And the downtown also has a streetscape plan, so we'd have to amend the streetscape plan. A lot of the portions of that are still applicable, but we need to do some updates to that. When we look at ordinances, we're drafting complete new Metro Everett zoning. So all the existing zoning, 13 different zoning districts, down to three zoning districts, is what's proposed. So we have to adopt a new Metro Everett zoning. Along with that is new development standards, so things about building heights and landscaping. All those provisions have to be adopted. Mentioned earlier that we're looking at a whole new parking chapter as well. So replacement of the existing parking chapter, streamlining it. Right now, parking standards are all over the code. We're trying to bring them all into one chapter so that if you're looking, anything about parking, you can look at Chapter 34 and hopefully find your answers about parking. And then a new standards for port compatibility overlay that we're looking at. So when we adopt new, we have to deal with the old as well. And so we have to repeal the current zoning. So there's several zoning districts that go away, as well as the zoning map, current zoning map. Core residential area is, includes downtown and outlying areas, and so we're proposing to get rid of the core residential area, but we're bringing some of the standards into the development codes that are outside of the Metro Everett. So we're working on those things right now. The clinic and office overlays, we're proposing to amend those. There's going to be a few remnants outside of Metro Everett, and so we're looking at amending that. I mentioned earlier the local project review procedures. And then we're looking at amending our State Environmental Policy Act exemptions for infill so that more projects, infill projects, would not have to go through additional environmental review as part of this. In the appendix, we also talk about those things that are incentives that we're looking at to try and incentivize some development that we want to see happen. One is a new job tax credit. Right now, you have to create 50 new jobs in order to get a new job tax credit. Proposing to lower that down to 10 new jobs in the Metro Everett. Tax exemption for building multifamily in urban centers. Most of Metro Everett's included, but not all of it, so we'd have to amend that ordinance to include all of Metro Everett. We have some proposed changes to impact fees, allow for deferral of some impact fees for non-residential uses and non-single-family uses in there, and so looking at ordinance for that. And utility fees for market rate housing. One of the things we would like to see is more market rate housing and trying to provide some financial incentives for that, and that has a budget consequence to it as well. So a couple of the big capital projects in the implementation section include some pedestrian bike improvements, light rail, which is ST3, and some parks improvements, including the lower end of Hewitt. Quite a few services are also in the implementation package. Look at doing a wayfinding plan throughout Metro Everett, looking at a Main Street program, which is kind of a downtown revitalization, semihistoric preservation-type program many cities have. Increased code enforcement, public art, and a corridor plan for Everett Avenue. So those are some of the big additional services that are within the draft plan. So with that, I'm going to do a quick overview of the plan, and then we can get into the discussion and questions and feedback. So in the land use chapter, I mentioned already that we have 15 current land uses reduced down to three. So there's 13 zoning districts, but there's 15 land use districts, so, and getting down to three. There's four overall goals of the chapter, looking at infill and redevelopment, underutilized and blighted areas, mixed use in transit-oriented areas, and ensuring compatibility. So in the plan, we identify those three different land use designations. We have the urban commercial mixed, which is the salmon color downtown. This is Everett Avenue right here, going up towards the high school on Colby, going all the way out to I-5. This is Everett Avenue right here, California Street, Hewitt, Pacific right here. We have urban light industrial around Everett Station, so the city's Public Works Yard is facing on Pacific. It's back in this area. So we do have some light industrial activities still within there, as well as south of 33rd Street in Everett Station on the other side, on the west side of the railroad tracks. We have two other light industrial areas down by the railroad and at the end of California Street on the west side of Marine View Drive for urban light industrial. The rest of the area is one residential district, urban residential. And we have some overlay districts. We have historic overlay that's still the Riverside, Rucker Grand, and then Norton Grand. So Norton Grand and Riverside come into the Metro Everett boundary, and the Rucker Grants right at the edge of the boundary, right here. So in the plan, we also look at two different parking areas. Right now, we have kind of the same concept, but with different boundaries within the plan. Parking Area A kind of being the core of downtown into Everett Station where the light rail is proposed, and then down on the east side of Hewitt Avenue towards the railroad track, or, excuse me, towards I-5. And so this is the area where we see more reduced parking, and so when you get the draft ordinance, you'll see some proposed standards that'll be different for Parking Area A and Parking Area B. So less parking required in Parking Area A, including no requirement for non-residential parking in Parking Area A. And we're actually exploring the alternative of looking at no residential required parking as well. And so we're having those types of discussions. We have designated not all the streets, but most of the streets within Metro Everett with one of four different categories. TOD Street, or Transit-Oriented Development Street. This is where we really have high-capacity bus or future light rail. So Broadway, Pacific being the main corridors there, and also around Everett Station on Smith Avenue, but also the routes that are kind of going in and around those areas in close proximity to that. So those are areas of high activity that we anticipate happening in the future around light rail and high-capacity transit. The second level of street is kind of a pedestrian street, kind of the core of downtown. Pedestrian streets, right now, we have a term in our plan called retail streets. It's only on, what, four or five streets? Four streets within downtown area. So we've expanded that concept to quite a few more streets within downtown, as well as part of Hewitt Avenue down in this area. The third category is pedestrian connector, and again, we have that in our existing downtown plan, but not as extensive as what we have here. Most of these connector streets, the idea is connecting between pedestrian areas, and these are on the shorter or the narrow end of the block. And so these are areas where not really the, normally the businesses face predominantly as it is on the pedestrian streets in these areas. The last category we have is a residential mixed-use corridor. This corridor is within areas that are zoned, are proposed to be zoned for urban residential. On Everett Avenue, part of California Street, coming in off of Cedar, around Providence. And I think this is one area that is different perhaps than what we had briefed you on before. We didn't have some of the areas around Providence and some of the offices, medical offices, things like that in that area. We didn't have this designation, so we've added that since probably our last briefing. By the way, I don't think anything has changed on our land use maps from our previous briefings at all. So everything is the same on that. Height limits, going with different standards for heights within the area. We've done quite a bit of briefing on this. We've looked at some 3D models of this, and we've modeled the areas. In large measure, most of the, where we have range of heights, the 7 to 25, 7 is a base height, getting up to 25. The only way you can go over 7 is by providing some kind of public amenities or getting incentives. And so provide affordable housing, you get additional heights, things like that. Most of the minimum or the baseline heights are actually pretty close to consistent with current height standards. And so there's some information that people think that we are increasing heights. Reality is, in a lot of the areas, our baseline heights are pretty close to the same, but what you can potentially do is get higher with incentives. And so with those incentives, and that will show up in the development codes. And so we've looked at 7 to 25 here, 7 to 11 around the perimeter out, and then as you get closer to the single-family neighborhoods, all this lowers down, up on the north end, down to three or four floors. Same thing down in the south end, lower floors as you get closer to the residential neighborhoods. Last thing I think I have in the land use thing is the port compatibility. Roughly, we've looked at a 500-foot buffer around the M2 zone that's around the ports and the Navy areas. We didn't actually just draw 500 feet. We wanted to draw it on boundaries so you could actually find it. So we drew it on roads or alleys or parcel lines. Most of the area through the, through here, it's on roads and alleys, but you can't find them as much as you get up in the Rucker Hill area, and so we do zigzag around parcels in some of that area. And so roughly a 500-foot buffer around that for port compatibility. This is also an example of a standard that would go outside of Metro Everett. So when we look at the ordinance, this plan would go outside of Metro Everett. So in the transportation chapter, we have several topics in there, including light rail, looking at congestion, transit, transportation demand management, or ways to reduce traffic, freight, pedestrians and bicycles, and parking. Light rail is a major part of the Metro Everett. So Sound Transit 3 was passed in 2016, so light rail would connect Tacoma to Everett. And specifically, the last link going north would be from Linwood up to Everett is what the ST3 plan funded for us. So as part of the plan, we did some charrettes to look at where the best location for the light rail station would go. The basic principles that we have in the plan is we'd like to see the station sited so that best serves both downtown and Everett Station. So what we've identified is a location close to Pacific and Broadway, north of 32nd Street, as being an ideal location, we felt, for that, with light rail coming in off of Broadway or McDougal or whatever route ends up being feasible as part of that. The other principle we have is we would like to see the parking garage to be on the east side of the railroad tracks so that the traffic that comes in for people that are not taking buses, that they're taking cars, is that we don't have all the cars within the area that we're trying to be pedestrian-oriented. So the cars are coming from the east and north to catch light rail, or even the south, they're coming off of I-5. Try to keep them over in this direction and go to the parking garage. And one of the things that we've done is identify that the Pacific Avenue Bridge over the railroad tracks can actually continue to be at grade to go up to Broadway where we have a bus route that comes underneath this bridge. And so if you're coming out of the parking garage here at grade at Pacific Avenue, you actually won't have to walk down and then back up, but you'll be able to walk basically at grade to the light rail and get up to the light, take an elevator or take the stairs up to the light rail platform as it comes in. Some of the other things in here is to have more pedestrian-oriented along 32nd Street and around McDougal. We've worked with community transit and Everett Transit to look at all the bus routes so that Swift can get in and out of here. Future BRT routes of community transit that are coming from the north could get in and out, dropping passengers off right here around Pacific or stop off of 33rd Street and getting into this area. In the interim, we'd like to see some pedestrian improvements connecting the Everett Station to the arena. Right now, for those of you that are brave enough to walk it, in particular at night, it's not necessarily a safe walking area, not well-lit, goes under bridges, narrow pathways in that area. And so trying to find some ways to get better pedestrian improvements in there. And so we've identified a couple of different options, but this is something that really needs to kind of be scoped out a little bit more by engineering staff to kind of get, look at ways to do routes up towards Wall Street or up towards Broadway with lighting and improve pathways within that area. So looking at some interim improvements, at least until light rail, so that we don't hopefully have to go 20 years before we see some improvements in that area. One of the things, as we participate in some of the Everett Station conversations, is bike routes into Everett Station. The low site is a potential, it's a 10-acre site that has the ability to really be transformative also for the amount of gross floor area that could happen down the road, and that would be within walking distance of light rail. A lot of the routes that come from the north into Everett Station and are on the east side of Broadway, they really are disjointed. As you can see, here's a bike route that comes in here, here's one that comes in here, but nothing really connects itself. And so as the low site gets redeveloped, the idea is there's actually a better route that comes in from the north, potentially here, and to connect across the property into Pacific Avenue and get into Everett Station a little bit better. And so as that area gets transformed, and it's just a straight line now, it's not meant to be a straight line. It just, whatever works best for the redevelopment, and this is the PUD property right here, to get you some reference there. So as a housing chapter, looking at four main topics, increasing supply for all incomes, looking at housing density, reducing housing costs, and a quality housing environment. Kind of zip through a couple of chapters here real quickly now. Historic resource chapter, three main areas is looking at education, incentives, and tourism. Main Street Program, and looking at a preservation ordinance that has a little bit more, perhaps, strength than our current ordinance does. Urban Design Chapter, three areas, building heights and massing, design for uses, and design for public... design for public spaces. Economic opportunities chapter, looking at placemaking, the residential market, commercial and industrial uses, permitting and financial incentives, and creating an active, safe, and clean environment. And last but not least, environment, parks, and open space chapter, looking at some catalyst projects, how we address new development and the environment. And one of the catalyst projects that we have on the board over there is the lower end of Hewitt at the railroad tracks and nowhere, you're not taking down the Anchor Tavern. The Anchor Tavern's right there. So this is a hole in the ground, so yeah, that's the anchor. So that'll be safe. But this is basically the Hewitt as it used to go underneath the railroad tracks, and the railroad has, would like to replace the bridge and trying to create a viewing area and a destination at that point. So, with that, that's your quick run-through of the Metro Everett Plan.
Commissioner Alar.
I just have a quick question. I'm looking through the schedule of the topics we're talking about, and I don't see kind of a breakdown for the housing component of it. Given that housing is such an important topic right now, do you think we'll have a, you think we could fit in a, an additional meeting, or at least schedule half a meeting to kind of go over some more of the policies and plans for housing? I see a lot of, lot of great stuff in here, and I really, really applaud the commission, staff for working to also make sure that we have all incomes can find a place here in Metro Everett. And I just want to know if there, if the commission has an appetite for it, and staff thinks we should flesh out some ideas for that one, for that component a little bit more. I open that question to the floor for debate. Because shockingly enough, I have some questions, so.
Alan Giffen, Planning Director. Well, I think we're going to get into some of that detail with the use matrix at the next planning commission meeting, not so much the incentives, but some of the things that we're talking about in terms of incentives would be to expand the multifamily property tax exemption to cover the entire metro area. Right now, it only covers, well, probably about two-thirds of it. And so that's, what we have found is the biggest incentive, based upon feedback from the development community. Most of the projects that have been built in the last 15 years in the downtown, the developers tell us they could not have done without that property tax exemption. And so that's a big one, so making sure that in the areas where we want to encourage housing, that we provide those incentives is probably the biggest financial incentive. We'll look at a number of code things in terms of just density. We already allow, for the most part, unlimited density in these areas, but combine that with the potential to increase building height by adding affordable housing as a component. You could get additional building height, whether that's in a mixed-use building or a purely residential building. We're looking at some changes in parking standards to make it less expensive to develop housing. The, I lost my train of thought on one other point that'd probably come back to me, but I know David's flipping through here. Did you have anything you wanted to add on housing?
I think you covered it well. The, just one other thing is that the mayor also is looking at a overall city housing strategy as well, so, and so that would have other components to it as well.
Excellent. One thing that I'm very interested in having the conversation, when we talk about the incentives, is what segments of AMI are captured by those incentives? And, you know, if the staff would have, like, because on page, page four of Chapter Six, there's a great breakdown of the, from Leven Consulting Group's kind of market analysis of what is needed in here and what, you know, could be captured and, you know, what's expected to come to the metro area. I just want to, I would love to hear, you know, how those incentives tie in with those breakdowns of AMI, to make sure that we're, you know, we're not, we're not only addressing low-income housing, but we're also addressing, making sure that we are creating housing in the area that also addresses median income, middle-income families that are traditionally cost-burdened, because being cost-burdened is a growing concern here in the region.
Yeah, I think that a lot of the things that you'll see within here is, for people that do for market-rate housing, they're not going to be targeting, as you know, probably the lower AMI, area median income. And so, we definitely have looked at some of the things that are a little bit more just below, so 60% to 80% of area median income, perhaps a little bit higher than that, perhaps as an incentive thing for market-rate housing. But Alan already covered, I think, all the other things that we're doing, so no density, reduced parking, you know, all those things, reduced costs, so that has a benefit for both market-rate housing and low-income housing. And so that, that would be a benefit all around.
Yeah, absolutely. I really, really applaud a lot of the great incentives in here, so I like a lot of that. I just want to make sure that we're hitting all parts of the spectrum, but this is excellent, so thank you so much.
Thank you. I want to also follow up in that for some of the lower household income levels, there's just no way to do that without subsidy, nonprofit, and other sources of financing targeted toward lower-income housing. But the incentives could help, so that if somebody were able to get more market-rate housing through greater building height by including a percentage of affordable housing units, and that's one of the incentives that already exists in our multifamily property tax exemption. We will probably adjust that so that even that would create more incentive to provide affordable housing.
Excellent. That's awesome. Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Any other comments?
Under transportation, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Under transportation, you've got parking, and you keep making comments around no parking and/or less parking.
Right.
And how's that work?
Well, that, we would not be the first city if we went with a zero required off-street parking requirement. There are cities that, Tacoma's probably the biggest example locally that you can see. They went to no minimum parking requirements in their downtown for housing or for non-residential use. They do enforce their on-street parking, they do have parking garages that, and I wouldn't say probably a huge supply of parking, but they did go from a free on-street parking system to chart, pay for on-street parking. And so, the reports that we get just from our peers down there are that it's beginning to stimulate some development, because parking is a very expensive part of development, especially if you're putting it in a structure or under a building and having to excavate a couple of extra floors just to put parking in. And this, the theory is, and we already have this in place for part of our downtown, and that's the non-residential uses, that we do not require any off-street parking, but that it would be determined by the building owner or their lender. Nobody's probably going to lend big money on a tall office building or a big apartment building without having the amount of parking that they felt was necessary to satisfy the market demand. So it's more of a market-based approach, if we take that approach. You know, we're looking at those different alternatives, and David can add some more of the nuances that we're looking at for reducing parking. But, you know, one of the options would be in that area, A, that David showed earlier, not only keeping the non-residential zero parking required, but also adding that to the residential. But that's, that's just one of the options that we'll look at, not making any recommendations at this time.
And those other areas, you talk about, what's the differentiability between options? Like, we have no rideshare here, we have a bus system that's not close to Tacoma's, and I'm not saying it's bad. And I'm all for the incentives, but also when you listen and talk to folks in town, it, parking seems to be their number-one issue of concern.
I'd say that's true about any part of town, any type of land use, and any type of permit.
In any city.
Well, I just, you know.
Yeah, parking is something we.
I'll sit here and laugh and giggle, but then there's reality, and where the rubber hits the road, I mean, down where I am, and I'm not speaking for myself, but it's a, it's a zoo. You know, there's been some change in uses in some of the buildings, and it's, it's a continual fighting and yelling and crashing into each other, and so I just, I hope we look at it and consider it, because it's a commerce you come, I've walked Colby, I would ask any of you that haven't, and talk to those folks, and, you know, a lot of those folks have built into their budgets money to pay for the parking tickets for their customers when they come in. And so, I just hope we listen to the people that we're supposed to be representing and make sure we do it right, because, I mean, I'm all for incentives. I don't want to say I'm not anti-parking, but I, I don't think that, I just find it really hard for us to compare ourselves to Tacoma or even go to Greenwood in Seattle where they're having some rebuttal to this no parking situation, because it's just, it's, so, just want to have that conversation.
Okay.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Yeah, I'd just like to publicly commend the staff for a nice job on putting this plan together. I think it's really coming together nicely now, and seeing it in pieces, the way you're presenting it to us is a good way to help us digest it. One observation, it sounds like going from 15 land use designations and 13 zoning districts, I guess it is, down to three, sounds like it's simplifying things. That's on the surface, but I would suggest that it may not be actually that way in practice, because what you're now doing, it looks like, and I'm not saying this is bad, and I think there's a good case to be made for it, but you've got different classes of streets. So presumably, if you're in the urban mixed, if you're on street type A, your, your development standards may be a little different than if you're on street type B. Obviously, you've got the height, different height zones, so you have to look and see what height zone you're in, what kind of a street you're on. So when I, when you go out to the public again, and even when you have the public hearing here with us, I think it would be helpful if you took a few sample sites and just kind of walked through how you actually determine what your development requirements are. Because it used to be you'd go into one of those 15 districts or whatever, and you'd get everything you need to know about your site, just, okay, I'm in this zone, and I go to that part of the code, and that'll tell me everything I need to know, generally. Maybe not parking, but just about everything else. But now it looks like, it sounds like it's going to be a little different, because you're going to have to identify what kind of a street you're on, what parking area, and what floor height area you're in. So I think just walking through a couple of examples to show how it would play out in reality, these, your zoning code, your new zoning code, I think would be very helpful.
I'm going to echo that, because that was actually an observation that I was making when you were going through. And we've talked about it before, having some samples that are not necessarily the 3D rendering, which is having some big posters of what it looks like, you know, because it's a programmatic approach, so.
Yeah, and as I mentioned, and when we looked at the schedule, we have about six weeks where we're not in front of you with the subject, and part of that is for us to do some internal testing of this ourselves, so we're going to, so our staff will, will take, Neils is working with, to kind of identify a couple of different projects, so just like we take a project in and say, okay, now let's review this project under these new standards. You know, how, where's the use, where does it fit, where's the street, and how does it read, and stuff like that. And so, so we'll be testing and making some adjustments as part of that. But I can tell you, we've expelled quite a few hours and probably brain cells in trying to get this code also simplified. And so, you'll get a little taste of it at the next meeting when we do have the use table, and so the streets and the overlay of the streets are integrated into the use table, so you're not looking all over the place for that. So, so if you're, you know, retail, sales, and service, and you're on a transit-oriented development street, you can see what, what that is right there, not have to go into different places, so.
Right.
So it's kind of, it's coming together, so, a little bit, knock on wood, literally.
Any more comments? Commissioner Dunn?
Yeah, do you have any, can you share any details of your outreach plan? Are you going to be holding public hearings or meetings in different parts of the city, or will you reach out to neighborhoods that are in metro and adjacent to metro? Any details you can share would be great.
Yeah, it's a great question. So, so first off, we've been to all the neighborhoods at the beginning of this process, and some of them, two or three times, so we've touched base with, with all those, but be glad to continue to do that. We are going to give notice to every property owner within Metro Everett, so before, we're going to do another open house, and we're looking for a venue, because we'll anticipate more people to show up, so every property owner will get a direct mailing of a postcard, invite them to the open house. We intend to have a web presence where people can look up what their current zoning is and then what's proposed, so they can get those, those types of information. But I think that trying to find some of the other outreach things to kind of get to the non-property owners, I think are other things that we still need to strategize about, so. Thanks for kind of bringing that up and reminding me to do that, so.
Yeah, thanks.
Any more comments? I just have one quick, so this schedule is very, very helpful, particularly if you're planning trips in the next few months for the commissioners, at least for me. So thank you, thank you, thank you. But I was looking over the implementation of the ordinances and adopt, amend, repeal, repeal, amend, adopt. That's an awful lot that's going to be going on legislatively in terms of recommendations. So, and I'm sure you guys are thinking one year, maybe even a year and a half, and to, just kind of, as you're putting this together, the further out you can go on the schedule, at least for commissioners, just because planning vacations and stuff, because it sounds like you guys are really starting to think strategically about how this is all going to flow. And my curiosity on some of this, particularly the repeal, when you repeal the downtown plan, is that just one, actually repeal the plan, and then will there be subsequent zoning ordinances that are, am I making sense here in terms of the old code? And how that process is going to kind of play out? Because that seems, that seems like a huge process.
It's mechanically, it's not that difficult. It's, in our ordinance, we will repeal an existing, for example, the B3 Zone Regulations, which is our current downtown central business district zoning. And in the, either in the same ordinance or subsequent ordinance immediately following that, adopt the new standards for all of the other zones that will be replacing that. So mechanically, it's not difficult. Probably more difficult part is just the public outreach process and explaining to people that while their zoning is changing, the, the regulations will be a little bit different, and just the comfort level that property owners will have, and, and the outreach that we do to, with public open houses and things like that, to make people understand and answer their questions is going to be more time-consuming and difficult than drafting the ordinances.
Okay. As part of that outreach, I'm just, I'm trying to, because you're, it is a dramatic shift, and how it's organized is probably going to be really critical to help people understand it. And so, and I'm understanding what you're saying in terms of the mechanics, how that's put together and how that's presented to the public in terms of the actual recommendation, are those drafts going to be available at the same time in terms of, does that make sense?
Yes and no. So, so first off, what we're trying to do is, you know, and I have here some of the staff working things on the code, and so what we're trying to do is focus in on, on what's new. And so, so in terms of communication, if you're downtown, the, you know, the communication is that you go to the new code, don't go to the old, you're going to go to the new code. And so look at what we're drafting in here and try to figure out how that fits you and what your input is on that. You certainly can look at your old code and see what the comparison is to that, but we're trying to package what is new into one package, and then, and then the action is to remove the other things, and as Alan said, that's a pretty simple thing to do that.
You just clarified it. So you're, you're putting. So, you're, you're putting it into one package.
Well, we're going to have, really, to help the, the public understand it, we're, we're putting it into one package that's the new stuff, so people can understand what's proposed, and then there'll be a package of what is being repealed or amended as a separate one, so that people can really look at what's new and how that affects them versus trying to look at one package, because the one package together will be overbearing.
Right.
So, what I want, you know, people to do is be able to look at what does the new use tables and development standards look like, without having to compare that within one ordinance to the other stuff. So they can just concentrate on, on this document and their input on that.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah.
This is a ton of work, and you guys have done an amazing job. Thank you.
We're not done yet.
I know you're not.
That'd waste a go, yeah.
I have a follow-up question.
Anything else? Commissioner Dunn?
Sorry. Just a quick follow-up question, then. Will the repeals be contingent on a replacement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, in fact, sequentially, I'm thinking that we, we adopt and then we repeal, so that we make sure that we have the new adoption, and then we-
Or triggers or sunset, okay.
Yeah, kind of thing, so, yeah. Yeah, otherwise, we would have a lawless downtown for a while.
Could be fun.
Then we get to our no-parking standards, right?
Any more comments from commissioners?
I guess I have one quick question. Dave, when you're presenting, you mentioned that a lot of this is taken advantage of and kind of planning around the sound transit and the, all that coming in, which at this point is really prospective. I can't remember what year they're even thinking, it's quite, quite far out. Given that a lot of this is dependent on that, and that, I know that's kind of the nature of planning to be, to begin with, but, I mean, how, how firm are, is all of that with sound transit? I guess I, with some of the things, we go on the legislature, there's a lot of criticism with car tabs, all that, funding, things can happen.
Things can happen, and what we know today is that it will be here in 2036. Something else could happen that might affect the timing of that, but, you know, we're operating under the assumption that the plan that the voters passed and the timing that has been included in that packet is what will come to pass. Now, if, you know, federal funding seems to fall away or something like that, then we'll have to make adjustments, but, you know, that's, all we can rely upon is what we know today. We're not going to have two or three contingency plans based upon what the feds might do, or voter initiatives, or anything like that, that we don't really know about.
And I think that, in terms of the plan and the ordinances, the only thing, I, I don't think that we would do anything differently, because where we identify where the light rail station is where Everett Station is, it still is the concentration of transit services. So the whole idea of transit-oriented development around there is, is still the same, so I wouldn't see that changing. You know, I think it would affect the market, you know, that, you know, we're not going to see the, the actual numbers that, you know, we were anticipating, that was planned for back in 2015 for the area. And it may affect a little bit of how we look at parking, you know, kind of getting back to Commissioner Tisdale's comments, is that, you know, if we thought that that wasn't something, then, you know, perhaps that's a little bit more of an issue of, because light rail and the transformative nature of that on parking demand, I think, in the future is, is, you know, should be real. I mean, we should be planning that to try to make sure that people are using buses and light, light rail in this area.
Commissioner Lark?
Piggybacking off that perfectly, what are we, like, right now, Everett Transit's in the process of putting together a plan. What are we doing to communicate as a planning commission what our needs or expected needs are for our transit needs are, to make sure that they are working into their plan and their goals, a way to serve the built environment we're seeking to create?
They've been a partner along with us on this whole Metro Everett Plan, they've been reviewing and giving input the whole way. Sabina will be back here, I think, at the first meeting in March to talk about the updated transit plan itself, so she's looking for your feedback to them as well, before they adopt their, their plans as well. So, yeah, it's, they've been integral partner to us all along the way.
Thank you so much.
Community transit as well?
Community transit as well, yep.
Thank you.
Any more comments?
All right, well, we'll take some public comments. If I misstate your name, please excuse me. I think this says Jean Hewitt?
Hewitt.
Hewitt. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Jean Hewitt, and I live at 3324 Grand Avenue here in Everett, in the Norton Grand Overlay. I've been keeping up to date with the progress of the comprehensive plan and Metro Everett Plan, and I'm, continue to be impressed by the undertaking that the planning department has taken on, and the commissioners as well. It's a huge undertaking, and I'm, it's amazing what you guys, the work that you're doing. And I'm really heartened to hear some of the comments and the interaction between you both. It's really well-thought-out and appreciated. That being said, I hope that we can clarify some points about where the Norton Grand Historic District is. We're primarily R3, which allows 20 to 29 units per acre, and you're considering upzoning us to 50 units per acre, which I'm a little concerned about. I also read about the, the area ratio, the lot line area ratio. I didn't read anything about setbacks or anything in that area, so I'm not sure when that's going to be discussed, because we do have some height limit issues that we're concerned about. So I guess what I just want to say is I need a little more clarification on some things, but I think that's going to be happening when you do the use workshop in another two weeks, and perhaps some other developmental standard workshops. We'll get a little more information about that.
Right.
Okay, well, that, you know, I'm really encouraged. I mean, it seems like you've taken a lot of our concerns of our neighborhood and implemented them into the plans and the, and the changes that you're going to do, and we hope you continue to do so in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next person we have is Sharita Burton. Please state your name and address.
Thank you. Sharita Burton, 707 Hawthorne Street. And I hadn't planned on speaking today, but again, whenever I hear the words parking, and I think of those neighbors of us in the North End, I want to speak up and comment, I want to echo what Commissioner Tisdale said about being thoughtful about our parking plans. I've, I've mentioned this to this body before. Those of us in the North End have a real issue with parking, with the, the growth of the city, and how much it hits us at the North End, with the college area growth. Having come from Seattle, one of the things we did when there were parking restrictions in a, in an area, is we would park a few blocks out, which ended up being in the neighborhoods, and then walking back in, or taking a bus in. And so, the neighborhoods will get hit hard if we're not conscious about the, and concerted about parking efforts, and so I hope that we're thoughtful about how parking is going to affect the neighborhoods outside of the downtown metro core. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else interested in speaking on this particular item that hasn't signed up?
No.
Let's move on to item number two, other business.
We don't have any other business today.
Okay. Then, we can adjourn this meeting?
Right. See you in a couple of weeks.
Meeting is adjourned.
You're going to be permanent here if you keep that.